All right, let us pray. Father, we come before you today seeking for your guidance, your blessings, and your mercy. Lord, we ask you forgive us where we have failed you. Lord, teach us to walk according to your word and your truth before men, to be a help to men and a light to men. Father, we seek your guidance and your wisdom for those who govern our community, our state, and our union. We pray for their decisions, that they bring blessings to our community and to our country. We ask for peace within our land and for your divine protection for those who serve and protect us. We ask that you bring provision into their homes, watch over and care for them. We ask that you would help us to honor them. Father, we ask that you will bless this council, the city, and our community. In Jesus' name we pray.
In the name of Amen. Thank you.
Please take roll call.
Abrams.
Here.
Manager.
Here.
Grubbs. Lewis.
Here.
Dole.
Here.
Maynes.
Here.
Galindo.
First item on this evening's agenda is approval of the council meeting minutes for May 15, 2018.
So moved.
Second. Do we have any additions or corrections that are needed? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Maynes.
Yea.
Abrams.
Yea.
Manager.
Yea.
Lewis.
I was absent, so I abstain.
And Dole.
Yea.
Next item is the invited guests and visitors. First visitor this evening, guest, is Mike Ringel. He is president of the local Harrison Quanis Club.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here on behalf of the Harrison Quanis Club to present a check on behalf of our club. We had a Taxman 5K fun run race over at Miami Whitewater Forest, and we raised $1,200 for the Harrison Mayor's Fund, so I'd like to present this to you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Quanis is a very longstanding organization in the city. I believe they're approaching 90 years as being an organization in the city. Their membership's been a little light lately, so if somebody would like to join, I'm sure they'd welcome it. And they do a lot of interesting and fun things throughout the year. They have fish fries during the Lenten season, they did their 5K. It used to be in the winter, now they moved it to the spring, a little bit nicer weather. They have many other events, and you can contact Mike if you have any questions about the Quanis. Next, we have Kathy Dieters with Energy Alliances to speak about our electric aggregation.
Can you hear me? I'm here to present the pricing for the electric aggregation program that the City of Harrison has voted as of August 1 in 2017. The city approved an ordinance to establish an opt-out electric aggregation program for the city's residents. They have gone through the process of getting the approval through the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. That approval happened on April 18 of the spring. That allowed us to go out to bid to multiple suppliers within the state of Ohio that are retail to sell electric to the residents, and we have presented the city with the pricing. Dynegy Energy Services came in with the lowest bid. There is an executable contract that has been presented this evening that can take place and sign in order for us to start through the process, to finalize the process, I should say. What happens once the city approves the pricing, there will go out in the mail to all the residents, and eligible residents, an opt-out letter, and if you are not currently with a supplier, you will receive that letter in the mail. If you are with a supplier currently, we do not send opt-out letters to those folks just because most times there are other contract language in different suppliers that would require an early termination fee, and we certainly don't want to interrupt anything and cause any of the folks to get a termination fee. If you are with a supplier and that contract is expiring any time within the next even 21 days, you could call or enroll in the program even though you didn't get a letter. If that contract expires later down the road, let's say a couple, three months, you still are eligible to enroll once your current contract expires. We are very pleased with the price. It came in at 5.04 cents, which is currently about 17% less than what Duke's rate is charging right now at about 6.0 cents, so it's almost, well, it is a little over a penny less. Once the opt-out letters go out, there's that 21-day, we are targeting August meter reads at this point if the contract's approved.
When should people be looking for those letters in their mail?
Once the contract gets signed, the process will happen right away, within the next week or so, the letters will go out. Any other questions?
Okay. So basically, the mayor's going to sign the contract tonight, you don't need anything else from council at this point?
Correct.
Because we've already...
There's already been authorization for me to proceed, I just, we were waiting on the pricing.
Right, okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This was a, this is a big boon for our citizens here.
Yes.
It's a big savings for everyone and for the city, and we're delighted with the work that's been done on this.
Great, and we hope to continue.
Can you share, like, the percentage, just a rough guesstimate of what, of course, not written in stone, what they would be saving?
Overall, typically, a normal household, we base it on 1,000 kilowatts per month is what a typical normal household will use. So if you're paying 6.0 cents, you kind of know that with the overall yearly savings, we've calculated based on about a 10 to 15% savings of about $125 to $130 a year, but with the savings of about 17%, obviously, that goes up. And Duke's rate does change based on their quarterly PUCO regulated rate, tariff rate, so that rate does fluctuate, and currently is at 607. So, that's their price to compare, so it's about 17%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Kathy.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Fire Chief forward. He has a new hire that he'd like to introduce.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. You're here tonight, as you're aware, we have a couple openings within our full-time ranks, one of those is the process complete to fill that vacancy. The successful candidate is here tonight is firefighter Austin Reiner. A little background on Austin, he graduated from Harrison High School in 2014, went to Scarlet Career Development Center, I'm assuming within your junior, senior year, correct?
Yes.
And then he attended the Cincinnati Fire Department, University of Cincinnati Paramedic Program when he graduated from that in January of 2017. He's a firefighter level two, a nationally-registered paramedic, a BLS instructor, an ice rescue technician, and then just two weeks ago completed his swift water technician course. So, Mayor, if you would do the honors and square Austin in for us tonight, I'd appreciate it.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
Austin Reiner.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
And that I will obey.
And that I will obey.
The laws thereof.
The laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charter.
And ordinances of.
And ordinances of.
The municipality of Harrison.
The municipality of Harrison.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Go to your board. Congratulations. Next. Congratulations. Go to your board.
This time, I believe Austin would like his mom to pin his badge on him as he starts his full-time career with us.
Well, Austin's getting his badge placed on by his mother, I'd like to say a few things. I've known Austin for a few years now, he's been a part-timer with the department, and he started actually with the department a few days ago, so he was unofficially sworn in, or officially sworn in a few days ago. And he was thanking everybody, and I told Austin afterwards, "You've earned this. You put your time in, you put the effort in, you got the education and the training, you've earned it." And that goes for all of the employees that we've hired. They've earned their jobs here, and every day they show that in their service to our residents. So, later tonight, we're going to honor some of our retirees who had an exemplary career of showing that to our residents. So, Austin, congratulations, and I look forward to a long career for you. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Brian McMurdo forward. We are appointing him, or I am appointing him, to the planning commission. I'd like to swear him in the office. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brian McMurdo.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Obey the laws thereof.
Obey the laws thereof.
And I will, in all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charter.
And ordinances of.
And ordinances of.
The municipality of Harrison.
The municipality of Harrison.
And faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Brian. Thank you. We also have a vacancy on the BZA, and I'd like to invite Ryan Samuels forward. He is being appointed to BZA, and I'd like to swear him in.
Raise your right hand. Good afternoon. I state your name.
I, Ryan Samuels.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charter.
And ordinances of.
And ordinances of.
The municipality of Harrison.
The municipality of Harrison.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So next, I'd like to invite Councilwoman Abrams up to talk about the recognition that
we're going to provide to our recent retirees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had an idea that I took to council and the mayor, not knowing how everyone would respond. I'm thrilled to report everyone strongly supported this project. We thought this would be a great way to honor our employees upon retirement. Tonight, we are proud to present to each retiree a United States flag that flew over the building they were assigned to. The flag, obviously, is in a beautiful case, and they will receive a certificate that the mayor will read, and a City of Harrison challenge coin. What is a challenge coin? Challenge coins are normally presented by unit commanders in the military in recognition for special achievement by a member of the unit. They are also exchanged in recognition of visits to an organization. They are also used as rewards or awards for outstanding service or performance of duty. As such, they are used as a tool to build morale. The challenge coin tradition has spread to other military units in all branches of service, and even to non-military organizations, as well as the United States Congress, which produces challenge coins for members of Congress to give to constituents. Thank you, all of you, thank all of the retirees for being here tonight, as we recognize your years of dedicated service to the City of Harrison. We truly appreciate you. I also have one more honorable mention for Bill Hulusick Senior, who helped me through this whole process with the flags and the cases and whatnot, and all of my questions, as he knows and deals with fabulously. So, anyway, thank you all. Mayor, come on up here and present him with the certificate.
So, I have several retirees that I'd like to invite forward. Each one is going to receive a flag inside of the holder and a challenge coin along with the certificate. The first one is for Thomas Everman, in honor of a 25-year career, in recognition of his retirement. The flag was flown over the wastewater treatment plant on May 7, 2018. Next retiree is, the next retiree is Officer Marvin Gamble, in honor of 29 years in the career of police officer with the City of Harrison, recognition from his retirement from Harrison Police Department. His flag was flown over the Harrison Police Headquarters on May 2, 2018. Our next retiree is Captain Steve Wilson, in honor of his 29-year career with the Harrison Police Department. His flag was flown over the Harrison Police Headquarters, May 3, 2018. Next, Robert Haas, 39-year career, that's pretty amazing, with the City of Harrison at the wastewater treatment plant.
Steve, thank you.
His flag was flown over the Harrison Wastewater Treatment Facility, May 2, 2018. We have one other retiree that wasn't able to make it this evening, Officer Jeff Moritz. He had a 25-year career, and we have a flag for him. Was flown over Harrison Police Headquarters, May 1, 2018. We'll make sure that he gets that. We have many other great employees in the city and some new hires that are stepping in to fill those spots, and I'm sure that they'll all be very good replacements. So now on to the business section of the meeting. The first item is to approve a resolution to appoint Shannon Hammons to the 2018 Tax Incentive Review Committee. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion or questions? Please take the roll.
Abrams.
Yea.
Manager.
Yea.
Lewis.
Yea.
Dole.
Yea.
Maynes.
Yea.
That's resolution number eight.
Those were all the items on the agenda for business. Do we have any items today?
Mayor, I'd like to add an item to the agenda.
Okay. Take the roll call and addition of an item.
Manager.
Yea.
Lewis.
Yea.
Dole.
Yea.
Maynes.
Yea.
Abrams.
Yea.
You introduce the item, Hank.
Mr. Mayor, we have an ordinance tonight that was prepared by our law director. The, deals with court costs that we charge in dealing with criminal and traffic offenses in mayor's court. Currently, costs are $50, and that leaves the city a few bucks short on each case. Hamilton County is now at $130, various other jurisdictions in and around Hamilton County are at $100. Our current ordinance calls for 20 for criminal and 10 for traffic, and needs to be updated. The ordinance sets the cost now at $100, that is the proposed ordinance, regardless of whether the matter is criminal or traffic, and I would move that the proposed ordinance be approved.
Second. Any discussion or questions? Please take the roll.
Lewis.
Yea.
Dole.
Yea.
Maynes.
Yea.
Abrams.
Yea.
Manager.
Yea.
And that's ordinance number 14.
Do we have any other business we need to attend to this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we call an executive session tonight. We have some building and lands issues, property sale and purchase to discuss, as well as an economic development issue.
Second.
Please take the roll.
Dole.
Yea.
Maynes.
Yea.
Abrams.
Yea.
Manager.
Yea.
Lewis.
Yea.
Okay, after the balance of the regular meeting and the reports, we'll adjourn to executive, or we'll recess to executive session. For the mayor's report, I'd like to thank all the guests and visitors we had tonight, especially the retirees, and I'd like any current employee to look at those retirees and let them be an inspiration to your career at the city. All of those gentlemen that we saw this evening, and there's plenty of female employees that have not retired yet, served the city very well over their careers. And our employees are the heart of our city. Without our employees, our city would be in shambles, because they're the guys and the women that every single day come to work and make the city work for you, the residents. It's not council, it's not the mayor, it's the people on the street doing the work, the police officers, the firefighters, the people at the water plant, the wastewater plant, the street workers. They're the ones that make the city work every single day. They have great directors to help them get their jobs done. As a council and a mayor, it's our jobs to give them the tools to make sure those things happen. So, look at those employees that just retired, if you're working here now, and let them be an inspiration for you for the balance of your career. And that concludes my report for this evening. Does the law director have a report?
No, I do not, Mayor, thank you.
Ms. Abrams, do you have a report this evening?
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Of course, I want to thank Mike Ringel, the president of the Quanis, for your generous mayor's fund donation. We truly appreciate your organization and all of our organizations here in Harrison. Of course, Kathy Dieters, Energy Alliances, we're excited to start saving money. I know I am. And of course, new firefighter Austin Reiner, we're so happy to have you here full-time. Brian McMurdo and Ryan Samuels, excited to have you guys on board our BZA and Planning Commission, welcome. And of course, the recent retiree, the retirees, we truly appreciate, obviously, all of our employees, and we congratulate you on your retirement. Economic Development met tonight. The city has assigned its purchase option for 301 Harrison Avenue for the redevelopment of the property into a restaurant entity. The entity does not want to be identified until they have their own purchase agreement executed. The new owner is a successful business owner and over the Rhine. That's just like a little teaser, right? People aren't going to be happy about that. Another restaurant group is also looking downtown. Economic Development has a meeting with them tomorrow. Plans have been submitted for a new Taco Bell in the outlot in front of Firehouse Subs. No word from the owner of the existing property as to that location's fate. Tomorrow, June 6, the second phase of the revolving loan fund applications for the downtown district will be available, beginning Monday, June 11. Applications will be due for consideration by Monday, July 9. McBride, Dale, and Clarion, and the Economic Development Department are continuing to work on the downtown design standards. It is intent of staff to have the information reviewed by the end of June, so it may be heard at the July 17 Planning Commission meeting and the July 24 council meeting. Updates to the DRD-approved permitted use and the citywide property maintenance code will be presented at the June 12 Planning Commission meeting for consideration by council on June 19. Our next meeting for economic development is July 3 at 6:00 p.m. A few events happening here and around town. The Greater Harrison Pet Club is hosting the Greater Harrison Pet Festival here at the Community Center, Sunday, June 10, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. There'll be exhibits, booths, park etiquette, training, and a canine demo. Harrison Summer Concert Series starts June 12 at 7:00 p.m. with the menus right here at the Community Center. We have a new event in the downtown district. Music on the Avenue starts June 13 at 7:00 p.m. with Final Order as the band in downtown Harrison, 200 Harrison Avenue. The next recreation meeting is June 13 at 7:00 p.m. I also want to thank Rumpke for partnering with us to continue to improve the Keep Harrison Beautiful program. We appreciate your financial support. I would also like to thank all the people in each neighborhood around Harrison that play a part in this program. We truly appreciate your help, hard work, and dedication. If you are interested in bringing, in being, bringing Keep Harrison Beautiful to your neighborhood, contact me. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, do you have a report this evening?
Mayor, just very briefly, the law committee met this evening. You know, we've got to work with the law director, yet we understand that we may have a, an upcoming mediation session with one of the pending litigation matters out there. I'd also inform my colleagues and the mayor that collective bargaining is underway with our city unions, so we'll keep you posted on the progress of those negotiations as they ensue. Last but not least, as you know, a comprehensive plan is in play, and consistent with what we asked of ourselves in that plan, Mr. Hammons has scheduled us for our first of what we hope to be. first of what we hope to be, will be annual, um, retreats to deal with some of the goals and objectives that were laid out in the plan. And the first annual retreat, based on that master plan, is gonna take place August the 18th, which is a Saturday morning, starting at 8:00 AM. Uh, it should run till about noon, and we'll have all the, uh, relevant people that partake, partook in the plan, and we're not gonna close it off to any interested citizen that may wanna come and, and, and participate. So, um, that's our first annual retreat, and, uh, we're off and running, so.
Is that all?
So I'll have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Lewis, do you have a report this evening?
Mayor, I don't have any committee reports this evening, but I would like to thank the, uh, people that came in and, uh, visited us tonight, and, and congratulations and welcome to our new, uh, appointees, Brian for the, uh, Planning Commission, and, and Ryan for the BZA. Um, there's so many things that happen in our community that wouldn't happen if it weren't for residents stepping up and volunteering to serve on these committees, so, uh, we appreciate your participation, gentlemen, and, and all the other people who serve our community. And I, I'll double down on what you said, Mayor, about our employees in this city, but I'd also like to point out our finance department also plays a big role, 'cause she makes sure they get paid and keep coming back to work, so.
That's a, that's a big incentive.
That's a big incentive, so thanks to Kathy for all you do in your department, uh. Um, that's all I have to say this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Dole, do you have a report this evening?
Seeing as how I was accused of making the meetings run long, because last week, last one was so short, so.
You did go.
You sure you don't have anything else for me?
I think I'm done.
You're done. Okay. Well, I did have committee meetings tonight, and we've got a ton of stuff. Um, so let's start with the Streets Committee, well, let's start with the next Planning Commission meeting, as long as we do have things on the agenda, will be June 12th at 7:00 PM here at the Community Center. Um, now, committee reports from tonight. Uh, we had a few folks come into the Streets Committee meeting, um, one with an issue regarding, uh, handicapped spaces on city streets. We're looking to the law director for some advice on that. Um, there is an issue that we're aware of on Linus Avenue, um, I guess the Fisher condos, they have exercised a right in their homeowners' association to where commercial vehicles cannot park in the, um, community anymore, so they're all parking along Linus, and it's creating blind spot. It's not a great situation, so we are reaching out to the homeowners' association to bring them in, um, and sit down at the table and see if we can all come up with a solution, rather than, uh, make it more no parking and drive the contractors down into the neighborhood. So, that is something we are working on right now up on Linus. Um, the Flintstone Reconstruction Project is pretty well nearing completion. Uh, base course has been paved, curbs are in, flat work is finished, um, and they are starting to install sod down there in the curb lawns. Um, they'll be coming back in the next month or so to adjust manholes, and then they'll follow up by paving the surface course, so that will be finished. There was some, uh, additional grant money on that project, so we're looking, uh, to get, use some of those bid savings to maybe do some additional work, um, down in the Joyce and Sunset area and on Arrowhead, so we'll keep you posted if the pricing comes in favorable on those. Uh, we're also going to have our, uh, annual Streets Issues Meeting. We're looking at September the 5th, so it'll be in the evening down here at the Community Center. I'll keep you posted on the date, um, as we move forward, but we're thinking it's gonna be the beginning of September. We're gonna have our, basically, if you have issues with your street, you bring them down, and that's the time to air your grievances, um, and we'll use your input to make the list for next year when we put out for grants. That's all I've got for the Streets Committee. Um, Utilities Committee, um, Mr. Leslie brought it to our attention that the EPA has mandated that we put together an asset management plan for all of our utilities. Um, we have contracted with Fishback Thompson Car and Uber to put that together for us. Also this summer, we've got two summer helpers, they're moving forward with the GIS mapping project. Basically what they're doing, they're taking all the city infrastructure, the pipes, valves, hydrants, meter pits, everything we've got, they're going out with, um, GPS, and they're mapping all of those pieces of infrastructure, so we've got AutoCAD files of everything, it's all right there on the computer, we can pull it up, no paper maps, so that's a great project, and we should be, uh, ta, take a pretty good hit out of it this summer. Hopefully, we can get it finished up. Storm Committee, um, we have, so we finished the Fawn Drive Storm Sewer Project, which was high on our list. One other project we had, um, that we were really trying to get done last year, but weren't able to get done, was the Biddle Avenue, uh, there's some issues up there with the storm sewers. Um, the pump that we were going to use, everything was gonna be drained into a pit, and it'd have to be pumped out into the storm sewers, the pump's no good, so we have to now buy a new pump. But, we've got the funds to do it, which is the good thing, so we're committed, it's going to be done this year, the sooner the better. Soon as we can get our hands on a, a pump that has the capacity to, to handle that kinda flow, they're gonna be up there and get that done, but this year, it will be done. And my last thing that I've got tonight, um, since Urbano's not here, this is more building and lands. The River Walk, um, Jim told us in our meetings that, um, the new trails have been cut in, the gravel is down there, and they're gonna be working to get the trails reinstalled, get the benches and stuff put back together. Um, we're anticipating a June 16th opening for the River Walk, so.
That'll be good, people are asking when is it gonna open?
It'll be, we'll put that on the website, Shannon, when we get that ready?
Okay.
Okay. All right, the next meeting of the Streets, uh, Utility and Storm Water Committees will be, hold on.
July 3rd.
July 3rd.
July 3. July the 3rd at 6:00 PM. And I think that's all I've got. I'm sure I'll probably remember some, but that, that's it for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Maynes, do you have a report this evening?
Just a couple of quick comments, Mayor. IT Committee did not meet tonight, will meet again July 3rd at 5:40. Um, and then, uh, we were down at the motocross track, my wife and I, this past Sunday, and this was the first Sunday that the track had been opened because of the weather and, and rain coming, you know, typically on a Friday or Saturday, and making the track too muddy to ride. And, uh, it was encouraging to see so many youth down there. We had a lot of youngsters in their little 50s, in their 70s, probably more youth at one time on the, on the, in the park than there were adults, and so it was just fun, and it was a, we had a nice time talking to some of the, uh, uh, parents and the riders down there, and, uh, it's really a kinda nice, we were surprised at the nice family environment, the nice people, uh, that we were talking with, and, and, uh, really just kinda, maybe a proud moment for us this weekend, so that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no other...
One more thing, Mayor, did you wanna present the, the directors with their challenge coins?
I was gonna, uh, do that when all of council was here next meeting.
Oh, okay. All right, next meeting.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Because we're missing two council members tonight, I want everybody to be present for that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, if there's no other business, we'll retire to executive session at this time. Thank you.